It is six o'clock. This is the board of selectmen's meeting on Monday, April 4th. And I'd like to get a motion to go into executive session for a purpose of general law thirty A, section twenty-one A, for the purpose number one, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations and non-union personnel, or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, town administrator. And number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations for non-union personnel, or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, town administrator, to return into open session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Wait in seconds.
Roll call.
Clark, aye.
Benoit, aye.
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye. So if I can just ask everybody to please leave.
Tamika will write it in.
So we're gonna open it, go back into open session. If we can just get approval to not read these Zoom.
Sure moved.
Second.
Wait in seconds.
Roll call.
Clark, aye.
Benoit, aye.
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye. And then if we can, start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Motion approved Treasury warrant, twenty-two W twenty and payroll twenty-two P W twenty.
And do I have a second?
Wait in seconds.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Clark, aye.
Benoit, aye.
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye excluding any COA wages. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes. I don't know if we wanna do it by date, or we just, see we got Board of Selectmen twenty-first and the thirtieth.
I would, you can do both of them.
There we go, go ahead.
So moved.
All right, do I have a second?
Wait in seconds.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Clark, aye.
Wait.
Oops, go ahead.
Benoit, aye.
Waitman, aye.
Nichols, aye. Gee, you guys wanna rush right through this now, don't you?
Yeah, we've got three pages of this stuff going on here, one, two, three, four pages.
And do we have anybody for public comment?
Look at that.
Wow, nobody has anything to say?
Yep.
All right, next on the agenda is the status of the town administrator. The select board and the town administrator have reached a resignation agreement effective September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. In such time, Mr. St. Angelo will serve as a remote town administrator working from home, and an interim town administrator to work from town hall will be appointed soon. And if I can get a motion for the board to ratify and confirm the executive session vote approval and sign the resignation agreement with Ron St. Angelo.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Wait in seconds.
And do I have roll call?
Clark, aye.
Benoit, aye.
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye. All right. Public hearing, street acceptance of Bryce Lemon Estate, phase two, consisting of Woodside Avenue Station thirty-five plus fifty to Station twenty-seven plus zero zero and Oakley Drive, also known as Millbrook Circle, Station zero plus zero zero to Station two plus sixty point zero zero. So I'd like to open the public hearing for Bryce Lemon Estate. Is that for that? So is the hearing is open?
Yeah.
So do we have a presentation or?
Well, we've been working on this. We actually put in for this to be looked at last fall, but we didn't finish the, we didn't finish enough road. By the way, I'm Cleve Blair.
Addus?
We didn't finish the roads to, to the, to get them done enough so that the town could accept them. They are done enough now. There's a few items left on the list that planning board is looking to have finished before they give completed recommendation, but they did give a kind of a recommendation with, there's a few items that we have to finish. Most of it has to do with, that's left right now, has to do with just a little bit of paving on a sidewalk and some lowman seating, but you have to do the sidewalk before we finish the lowman seating. But other than that, all the work that I, I'm aware of that they're looking to have done is finished. So I'm hoping that we can get those roads accepted at this town, or at least fill in the warrant here.
You want any comments on the planning board? Is that acceptable and that's the plan?
Yeah, it's just pretty much what Cleve said, we did give a conditional positive recommendation and where the items that are left are, I can't say they're insignificant, but they're simple things. It's, you know, chiseling a little bit of sidewalk, exposed hydrant bolts. I think it's raised up a couple of water shut offs, lowman seed, you know, all of it's number one, really couldn't be done through the winter season. And now we're back in the spring, so it should be able to be. We're confident that the, the admin has enough reason to really want to make sure he gets those things done.
Any other comments or concerns?
Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Oh, Joe, you all set with it? Do you reviewed everything?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I did walk the site with the planning board and I'm aware of what's been called out and I believe it's ready to go. The contractor will finish it in time to put it up for a vote.
Is it aye?
Yes.
I, I'm a little hesitant, only because I feel like we've kind of tried to step back from all the conditional stuff and have everything done before. It's actually, we're laying everything out and I just wanna know, planning board, do you have confidence that the punch lists will be met in time for town meeting?
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
I was hunting for a word here, but Cleve certainly has incentive at this point to get that done. And I guess the other thing is, there certainly are no safety concerns over any of these things. They're cosmetic.
Like I said, my hesitation is just, I thought we were trying to move kind of away from the, from.
Punch list.
Yes. And get everything done before doing it. And I understand that with the spring and everything, so I just wanna have.
If we didn't have winter, we could have.
Welcome to New England.
All right, any other comments or concerns?
Is there anybody on that wants to, I don't know if anybody's on this.
Tamika, is anybody not trying to make any comments, right?
I don't know, cause I don't have a computer.
Oh.
But if they raised their hand, you would see it on screen.
Oh, I'd see it, okay.
So the chair, I just, Norm, I would like to know how, we need to have this checked and balanced before it goes on, even if it makes it to the warrant, because it closes tomorrow. We need to make sure that it's done before it's taken for a vote. How will that be communicated to the board?
You know, the only thing that I can say is, when you say the warrant closes, wait, tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
These are not gonna be done by the time the warrant closes. However, we will be giving a final recommendation on the town meeting floor.
Cause we could always just not place.
Not recommend or place, yeah.
Right.
All right, we're all set. Close the public hearing. And if I can get a recommend, a recommendation motion for the select board to vote.
I'm sorry, I'm interrupting. We need a motion to close it.
Oh, we need, okay.
We'll make a motion.
When I need a motion.
Was passing up there.
Do I have a second?
Wait in seconds.
Roll call.
Clark, aye.
Benoit, aye.
Waitman, aye.
Nichols, aye. All right. Public hearing is closed, so if I can get any vote from the board to accept the layout of Woodside Avenue and Oakley Drive.
I'd like to make a motion to accept, accept whatever we're at, Woodside Ave and Oak Drive and Millbrook Circle.
And do we want to know?
To with, with the finish, with the final approval of the planning board.
Do I have a second?
Wait in seconds.
Any other discussion? No, okay, roll call.
Clark, aye.
Benoit, aye.
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye. All right. Public hearing, street acceptance of Teresa Drive, part of Maple Hill Estates, Station zero zero plus zero zero to Station four plus twenty-five. And I am opening the public hearing for Teresa Drive.
This is Cleve Blair again. This is another one of my roads. The Teresa Drive is finished. All the work on the punch list is finished. There is a, there was an issue with the conservation restriction, which I told the Conservation Commission that I would make sure I got it to them by the nineteenth of April. I've already submitted, Tamika could back me up on that. I already submitted it with all the changes that they asked for. Conservation restriction has to be approved by the state, and any changes to the conservation restriction have to be approved by the state legislature. So we waited until the end to finalize it, because they've been making changes to the open space throughout the project. Apparently, we weren't supposed to hand out, the town wasn't supposed to give out any occupancy permits, which was a new one on me, but all the houses are being lived in and the streets being used and I thought it all went there. So as far as the punch list is concerned, it's done. The conservation restriction, I incorporated all of the changes that the Conservation Commission asked for, with the exception of, you know, one or two that just didn't make any sense. Other than that, this one's finished.
Okay. Norm, the planning board is all set on this?
Okay, the only thing I'll say is, I cannot confirm that all of the punch list stuff is done. I know there was some replacement rocks at the spillway and the detention. We had some lowman seating, slant sidewalks. We haven't gotten a report on every engineer that that has been done.
We did finish it, but, we did finish it. He's gotta confirm that yet.
Again, these are tiny, tiny, tiny.
Okay, Joe, are you all set with it?
I am. And I can verify that the lowman seed work that the gentleman from planning mentioned is completed.
Okay, so conservation's okay at this point? All right. Any public comment, any other questions regarding the approval?
So I have one question, sorry, about this one. Because the, if I understand correctly, Cleve, this might be for you directly, the conservation restriction is still going to have to be approved. So we approved the road and everything, but that restriction still needs to go through the state process, is that?
Yes, that's clear. If I can, if I understand your question, you know, what happens to that? We submitted a conservation restriction when we started the site a couple of years ago, and the Conservation Commission, through the select board, I believe, grabbed it and they made a lot of changes to it. They got the attorneys from the town involved and things like that. Just so you know, in all the other open space subdivisions of this size that I've done, and no one could probably back me up on this, it hasn't been a state-owned conservation restriction, it's been a town-owned. So it was a new process to us on this small one. But we got it off to the state, they did approve it, and when it came back, Conservation Commission made some changes to it. In the meantime, the open space got changed two, maybe three times. One time we had to put a fence in and they wouldn't allow it on state conservation restrictions, so we had to change it. Then they changed some of the open space, one of the customers wanted a little bit of open space behind them, so they changed it again. And then they changed it again the other day in February. So we really couldn't have finalized it, because you can't make those changes once the state, once it gets recorded, because the state either has to have, you know, has to go through the legislature, which is, you know, an act of God, or something like that. So I, it's just the process, and it has nothing to do with the road, or the safety of the road, or any of the work that has to be done on the road. It's basically just a paper document that needs to get recorded, because it's an open space. And that's, that's really all. Did I answer your question?
I think so. I mean, I had a couple of questions that I had caught with, caught up with Peter before, just kind of, again, to verify the process, because kind of, I had missed a lot of it in last, I had heard was there were a lot of conservation concerns, restriction concerns on it, and then all of a sudden it's before us. So I just wanted to understand what that process was, so.
Does Peter have any? Do we know if, can he hear us here? Does he, does he have any comment? Peter, do you have any comment regarding this? Nope, there is.
Andy, the Conservation Commission will be taking it up tomorrow night. So as Cleve said, we got most of our changes in. We'll discuss what's left tomorrow, and unless there's controversy, we should be able to move forward with it quickly.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments or concerns? If I can get a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Wait in seconds.
Clark, aye.
Benoit, aye.
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye. And can I get a motion regarding acceptance?
Motion accepted. Teresa, Teresa Drive.
And do I have?
Can, would you consider conditioning that ConCon?
Conservation, okay, I'll consider that, under the approval or whatever from Conservation. Yep, I can do that.
Thank you. Wait in seconds, though.
Any other comments?
Clark, aye.
Waitman, aye.
Benoit, nay.
And Nichols, aye. All right, next is Bryce Lemon Estates, phase one. Just to review the layouts for phase one, I don't think we have to go into public hearing on this one, right?
She does have it listed under a hearing.
But this is a continuing, but it doesn't say under the minutes that it's public hearing. The other ones say public hearing and then this just says.
Sharen is on, we can double check. I'm not certain on this one.
Sharen, do you know if Bryce Lemon Estate, phase one, needs to be a public hearing? Oh, you're on mute.
You're muted.
Sorry.
Sorry.
There you go.
Right, at this point, you're just looking for intention to lay it out as a public way. The public hearing will come at a later date.
Okay. So this is.
No, no.
No? As disagreement.
My understanding was everything was done on this and deadlines were not made, not, paperwork was not done.
Yeah, if I could, could I just add?
Yep.
So this was put on the warrant last year and the town accepted it. So you guys already had a public hearing last year. The planning board already made the recommendation and the town actually voted to accept it, but the town never took the easement. And I brought that up to Norm and David, maybe a month ago or a couple of weeks ago, and they checked with the selectmen's office and they said, it never got, the easements never got taken. You know, we turned in all the paperwork, but I don't know, the easements never got taken. So they only have, Sharen, you might be able to help me on this, but what is it, a hundred and twenty days from the town meeting? So it didn't get done in time, so it has to go back to town meeting and just get revoted. It's basically just, how do you call it? Cleaning up.
Like recertifying.
Yeah, recertify us. All the work that had to be done, and if you correct me if I'm wrong, but everything that needed to be done to accept the streets was done, and they actually got accepted last May.
Norm?
Just, and again, my recollection, I don't have anything in writing, but I saw the, from Dave George, I saw the procedure that was gonna be necessary for this, and it did not require a new public hearing, only a public meeting.
That's correct.
Here we are.
All right, so is this considered a public meeting?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, so it's just to, to review the layout for phase one and vote to refer the layouts to the planning board? That's incorrect.
You have to lay it out, though.
I think we have this.
So it gets on the board.
Oh, it's on the, yeah, so you, can you make the motion?
I move that we, that the select board vote its intention to lay out Sedona Circle and a portion of Woodside Ave from STA fifty plus twenty-four point twelve to STA thirty-five plus fifty point zero zero as public ways, all as shown on a plan entitled Road as Built Plans Bryce Estates, Phase One, dated October seventh, twenty twenty, prepared by New England Environmental Design, Inc., which plan is on file with the town clerk, and to forward this vote and the plan to the planning board for its comments and recommendations pursuant to GL, Chapter forty, Section eighty-one G, and Sections eighty-one G and eighty-one I.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Can I get a roll call vote?
Clark, aye.
Benoit, aye.
Waitman, aye.
And Nichols, aye.
All right. Excuse me.
Yes.
So on the other two streets, you voted to lay them out, Teresa Drive and Woodside and those?
Yep.
You did? Okay. I just didn't understand the way the motion, I didn't understand. So it's all set.
Slow down. Listen, take your time, don't get excited.
Right, Tamika, we're all set on all three of them?
I think so. She has on the agenda vote to refer the layouts to the planning board? I'm not sure if that's necessary.
Are you talking about the first two or this, because we just did that? The third, yeah, the third one we just did. That was, that was in the motion, yeah.
That was what I thought it was. But I think we're good.
Yeah.
All right.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Take care, Clark.
I'm gonna go on to department head updates and Karina? Recreation?
I'm Karina Barhoff, Recreation Director. Thanks for having me. So I have some updates from the Recreation Department. It's been kind of a crazy school year, but we're kind of settling back into normal life, I guess you could call it, after pandemic craziness. Our biggest challenge is always is just space to do anything, so that continues to be our biggest issue at this point. Lots of great staff and volunteers that have kept programs running throughout the school year, so I just wanna say thank you to them. So I'll just kind of go like, give you a highlight of some of our programs and activities through the year, if that's okay. So under the learning tree, which is our kind of term for our after-school enrichment programs, the only one we've gotten back up and running right now is dodgeball at Glenwood, so that continues to be very popular, with a waiting list every session, but because we don't have any, NAQAG was configured, so we couldn't use the gym, so we haven't been able to do anything over there. So that's all we have going on after-school right now. Adult fitness.
I'm sorry, NAQAG was what?
The gym was configured as cafeteria, basically, at NAQAG.
Oh, so it's set up, yeah.
Yeah, so we haven't been able to run any programs at NAQAG yet this year. It's back to normal now, but that ship has sailed, I'm on to summertime. We'll catch up with them next year.
Thank you.
Adult fitness has not been able to resume to this point. Basketball, youth basketball, we had three hundred and seventy-two participants, which is probably about pre-pandemic levels. That was great. Forty volunteer coordinators, coaches and assistant coaches made that happen. We had record participation for our girls, grades four, five and sixth divisions. We were able to run our own league with four teams for that age group, so that was pretty great. Seventh and eighth grade girls, up until last, well, twenty twenty, we had kind of lost seventh and eighth grade girls for basketball. We didn't have enough players to even make a team. So twenty twenty, we had enough players. They were awesome. They went and played in the Quabon Youth Basketball League, so they, Quabon Valley Basketball League. They went all over the place. They went to Ludlow, they went to Chicopee. In twenty twenty, the girls were, came in second in the championship division. This year, they made it to the semifinals, so they did great. Again, NAQAG, we didn't have the NAQAG gym, so space was tight, but we were able to use Glenwood, Central Tree and Paxton Center School, so we really appreciate all their help. Then moving on to middle school girls volleyball, that's a program we run with some of the high school volleyball coaches, and that program was full with forty-eight middle school girls playing volleyball from Rutland and all the different towns in the district as well. Summer camp, so as I mentioned, we're kind of like full bore into summer camp planning right now. Summer camp fills up in about five days. We have about a hundred kids a day in grades K through eight, plus a number of ninth and tenth grade counselors in training who come and volunteer during the summer for us. So that's good. We have a waiting list for every week. We have nine weeks of camp this summer, so that'll keep a lot of people really busy, also myself included. The pool, we are, we haven't started selling pool passes yet, but we're, I'll be probably popping the cover off a little bit in the next day or two, seeing what's going on under there, crossing my fingers that there's not too many leaves on the bottom, getting the vacuum running, getting it nice and clean. So when we pull the cover off, it doesn't look like a swamp, that's, that's my goal. We have a water safety instructor class scheduled to certify Red Cross swim instructors at the end of June, and that's a four-day class that certifies people to teach Red Cross swim lessons anywhere, so they can take that certification, go to Y, go to, you know, Paxton Sports Center, teach swim lessons there. Swim lessons, very important to me, they save a lot of lives, so I think it's a great community service to certify those instructors. We are able to teach more lessons, and then they go out and they can teach lessons in other places, too. So we kind of multiply our positive effects. Events, we have the Easter egg hunt coming up this coming Saturday, that will be at Memorial Field. We're planning the bike parade as usual for the Fourth of July. I think that's all we have going on for events at the moment, aside from our opening day pool party, but that's, that's all we have for that. So right now, we are hiring for all of our summer seasonal positions, so we're accepting applications for a pool manager, I need an aquatics director, I need some lifeguards, some swim instructors, a couple of camp counselors. Everybody wants to be camp counselors, very popular job, but we usually only hire one or two a year. I have a very high percentage of staff come back, so I only, out of probably the twelve counselors I have, I only need, only hire one or two new ones a year, which is, which is great. It really makes a big difference to the program. So not everybody knows that Recreation actually employs about thirty-plus young adults throughout the summertime, and I actually consider our employment of youth to be one of the most important programs that we offer, because it offers the kids important employment experience that they can get in kind of a safe, supportive environment, allows them to save for college, it gives them a connection to the community. So, you know, people don't think of staffing as a program, but I do, because those kids are kids that have come up through summer camp and swim lessons, and then they move on to be lifeguards and camp counselors, so. I think that's about it for programs for Recreation.
Now, is there anything specific for three hundredth? Are you doing anything through Recreation?
I forgot to mention the ice rink, that was, that was a major oversight. We had the, through a partial donation from GFA, we were able to purchase the ice rink that we were kind of planning to purchase in twenty twenty before COVID hit, so we got that set up. That was kind of like with cooperation from the three hundredth committee as well. Sheila Debb and I drove down to Connecticut, threw it in a trailer, brought it back, set it up, it was great. We didn't use it that much, because of, you know, it was late in the season, but we learned a lot about what it takes to get it going and take care of the ice and all that, so next, next winter that will be, we'll get a lot more use out of it. I think the three hundredth is going to kind of work with us for the bike parade this year, but we don't, we don't have anything specifically. It's kind of our busy, our busy season in the summertime, so we don't have any three hundredth specific events planned.
Now, I know I had spoken to you briefly about the needs, and you talked about teenagers having, needing something to do, about a facility, and we had talked about something near the pool house or in the center or something like that. Have you ever approached CIPC or talked about the group on the ARPA funds or any of that, regarding any possible, because we were talking about some, just like a shell, you know, like a gym?
Yeah, right. No, not ARPA funds specifically. I was just kind of made aware that there was a lot more flexibility. I had been kind of told that ARPA funds were kind of pretty limited as to how they were being spent, but I recently kind of became aware that there was more scope to that, so I don't know.
Has this ever been spoken to, with CIPC about at all, do you know?
I don't think so, but I don't know for sure. I know, I think CIPC has been focused a lot on the building report that we got, so I don't.
The buildings that we have, yeah.
One question, if I, kind of segueing into that, I think I heard you say that there's, you haven't had any adult fitness classes. Is that mostly a space constraint issue? Is it a?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's a need for space for, obviously for the kids as well as for adult.
Right, yeah, and that's the thing, you know, recreation programs, I, people tend to think of them as kind of for kids, but really, the recreation programs that we run are from absolutely every member of the community, everybody in town. You know, our fitness classes have eighty-five-year-old participants that used to come, and they don't have that anymore. So that's, you know, all the way down to like tiny babies at the pool and stuff like that. And we used to be able to do things like music classes, like mommy and me toddler time, music classes and things like that, but it's just, it's, it's pretty limited. I do have, I'm sorry.
You know, if it's on the same, same page to go.
It's not.
Okay. Just a curiosity question, too. You mentioned that you have upwards of thirty-plus people in the summer, and you mentioned kids coming up through the program. What is, what is our, what is the population of the summer seasonal employees from Rutland?
It's a hundred percent. Aside from maybe a lifeguard or two, but that kind of varies. Lifeguards kind of work everywhere, so we might, you know, have a holding lifeguard that we borrow or some such thing, but it's, it's a hundred percent. It's all, yeah. It is great, because those kids are, you know, they've literally, I'm interviewing kids that I had, let's see, this is my, this is my seventh summer, so, you know, they were like in third grade when I started their first, my first summer here.
Thank you.
I just did have one more thing. So I wanted to recommend that the Select Board discusses placing signs around the town playing fields, saying something to the effect of group use by permit only. This is a sign that I see a lot on other towns' playing fields. There's nothing like posted telling groups that might, or teams that might want to come in and have a practice that they have to make a reservation. So I have heard, it hasn't really been an issue, so to speak, but I have heard of teams, or found out about teams coming in and like holding practices without approval first. So if there were some sort of signage that indicated that they needed to seek approval and be on the schedule first, it would prevent any sort of conflicts between like, you know, a Rutland youth baseball team showing up to practice, and they're having, you know, another team there. The teams that kind of come in from outside and want to use the fields tend to be like private club teams, so it, it just might be something to consider. Like I said, it hasn't been an issue, but I know that it has happened. It just hasn't turned into a conflict to this point, but I travel around a lot and see a lot of sports fields, and that's one thing, one sign I see a lot that just says group use by permit only. So it doesn't really prohibit, you know, like a dad and his son from coming up and throwing, you know, playing catch on the field or anything like that. It's just that teams should get approval and get on the schedule, so there's no conflicts.
Would that also help with teams being on the field before they've been released by DPW and Recreation?
Yeah, it definitely would. I don't think that that's, like, that's never been a problem with soccer or Rutland soccer or Rutland baseball. Like, they're great. Everyone communicates really well about, you know, like the fields are open, the fields aren't open. So, you know, even if we have to close them, everyone, you know, Mr. Buckley will call me and I'll call whoever and tell them. But it would definitely also prevent people using the fields without approval, because if I have a permit for them and we have to close the fields for a reason, we can get in touch, we have contact information, we can call them and tell them, you guys can't practice, or you, you know, you have, you can do infield practice only or whatever, so that's just a suggestion I have.
Anybody have anything else? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Good luck for the pool.
Thank you.
Bring it right. All right. Next on the agenda is Town Administrator Update. Obviously, we've announced that we'll be looking for an interim Town Administrator until a permanent Town Administrator is put into place. So I think in the meantime, we'll need to place somebody as an interim Town Administrator. Do we have any motions?
Motion to look for, look to point you to, for the, we're looking for a motion to, for the town, new TA, is that what you're looking at?
No, we're looking for the interim Town Administrator. We need to take.
Oh, that we're doing that later on, okay.
Taking, take action into finding someone to work as the interim Town Administrator.
I'd like to make a motion that the chair be appointed or liaison to find or talk to prospective persons for town at the interim Town Administrator. And the recommendation I would make would be talking to Gary Keller, former, former employee of the town.
Until, until a permanent?
Until a permanent owner is appointed.
Do you want to begin contract negotiations with him?
You could add that in there, too.
Did you get all that, Tamika? Do we, do we have a second?
A second?
Any discussion? Okay, roll call?
Clark, I.
Benoit, I.
Wyman, I.
And Nichols, I? All right, so hopefully we'll get that in place as soon as possible. Full business to discuss possible action with Wachusett Road KP Law in sight.
Yep.
So we have, still, there. All right, welcome and thank you for coming tonight. I know the board had sent several questions regarding this road and the status of the road. How does the board want to go forward? Do you want to review our questions? I know you had quite a few questions, or?
Yeah, I mean, I can, if it's okay, I can just kind of reiterate what my questions were and then if there's discussion or whatever. My main question was, for Wachusett Road, what options we as a town have when it comes to maintaining Wachusett Road as a public way? It's a, it's a way that hasn't been used in forever. I've lived in town for twelve years, and it's had Maple Sugar Lines across it the entire twelve years I've been in town. So I wanted to know what the responsibility was of the town to invest a significant amount of money and resources into bringing that up to passable standards. So if I understand correctly, the town could vote at town meeting to say that it's, to abandon the road. That requires, I'm sure maybe you can speak to this, that I thought it was a two-thirds vote, maybe it's a simple majority. But then there's also a way that the town, that the Select Board can vote to discontinue maintenance on the road, so it remains as a public way, but we don't have to do any, invest any funds or manpower into the upkeep of the road, essentially what has been happening for decades already. And in order to do that, the Select Board would need to call a public hearing, I think, and then post that appropriately with the intention of the roads, and then have the hearings, and then the board can vote to discontinue maintenance on it, submit the documentation to the town clerk, and have both ends of the roadway posted, so notifying the public that it's a unmaintained public way and kind of used at your own risk, and that would alleviate the town from any financial or liabilities of any sort. Am I, is that kind of my understanding? I think you're muted, sorry.
Sorry about that. Yes, you're correct.
So I think, I mean, I don't want to speak to the whole board, but I know I had a lot of concerns about the amount of money that it was going to take, actual dollar amounts, as well as time and resources to get that road to a passable condition, that way into a passable condition, even for kind of a four-wheel-drive vehicle, let alone emergency vehicles or anything. And my understanding is that when that road, once Wachusett Street was continued and extended from sixty-eight into Princeton, that that Wachusett Road, of which we're talking about, was kind of never really used again, other than possibly as a glorified car path. Like I said, my biggest concern is the investment that the town would have to be making to bring that road up when it hasn't been used, and we have a lot of other currently in-use, heavily-populated roads that could better benefit from those resources and dollars and manpower, person power. So I don't know if the board has any, I definitely am personally leaning one way very strongly and would happily make a motion, but I would like to have conversation in sight, whatever.
So, so it's my understanding, so if, if we don't see this as a priority when we don't have the resources for the heavily-traveled roads, there's no necessity for us to act quickly if, at all, in, in doing this if other roads need attention. Is that correct? Is there any, we, we were given the impression there was some urgency to having this get done.
No, in my opinion, there's no urgency. I mean, if you have a public way, the town is responsible for its maintenance, but the responsibility for maintaining it, it depends on the nature and character of the road. If it is a road like this one, which is not used very often, if used at all, you've never maintained it, and you've very, done very little work on it, you know, there's no urgency to it, except that you don't want to be responsible for any injuries or death occurring from the use of the road. So what the town would do was, would be to correct the most obvious deficiencies in the road. You don't have to make it passable. It can remain in the same condition. We just want to make sure it's relatively safe. You know, so, so your obligations are tempered by how it's used, how much it's used, what the town has done in the past, and that, that is a guide to what it does going forward.
Is there, is there any reason that we couldn't, like, the road has not been traveled for many, many, many years, so is there any reason why that road couldn't be kept closed until the town has the, the resources to do anything, to make it passable?
Well, once a road is a public way, it's really not possible to close a road unless you go through one of these options of discontinuing the road or discontinuing the maintenance of the road. So if you actually want to close the road, that's what I recommend you do, is one of the following, one of the two procedures. Or the town could choose not to do anything at all. It hasn't done anything to it in the past, and maybe he doesn't want to do anything at this time either.
And the, the determination that it's a public road, does that fully fall on the town, or is that the, the landowner have responsibility to?
Well, it depends who's asking the question. So if, if it's a, if it's a butler who's claiming that this is a public way, then the, it is the obligation of the butler to prove in fact that this road is a public way. If, on the other hand, the town was interested in claiming it as a public way, then the responsibility would be on the town. So, you know, so let's say if somebody brings a claim that you, that you, that there are defects in the way and they've been injured, you know, the town could reasonably say, well, what evidence do you have that this is in fact a public way? And it would be on them to satisfy that, that burden.
And did you have any questions?
I thought you had an answer, but it changed.
No, I mean, I still, I think if I understand this properly, is, it's a public way until or unless the, the town takes action at town meeting, or the Select Board takes action through the discontinuings of maintenance, which is GL Chapter eighty-one, Section thirty, thirty-two A, I think. So that that would be, those are the two options that the town can kind of say, if we abandon, if the town votes at town meeting to abandon the road, I think the town loses kind of access to the town, to that road entirely. Could potentially, Sharon, maybe, open up to legal ramifications from any property owners. My understanding is that the discontinuance of maintenance, should the town down the road decide that it is a valuable throughway, could undo that and invest the time and resources to bring that road back up to passable, to passable, I don't want to say back up, but to passable standards and everything, is my understanding. Sharon, please correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that's correct. So if you choose to discontinue maintenance of the road, then, you know, then you can decide at a later time to lay it out again as a public way, and you'll have to follow the same procedures that you're following with the Bryce Estates roads. So you could certainly choose to do that. But again, as I mentioned, it's the, the discontinuance of maintenance is done by the Select Board. It's not by town meeting. A town meeting merely votes to discontinue it, so that it's no longer a public way.
Mr. Chairman, would you mind if I ask a question through you to the attorney?
Sure.
Sharon, it's my understanding to discontinue maintenance, it'd have to go through a hearing process and reach out to the actual butlers on the road. Could you explain what the purpose behind that is and what it accomplishes?
Well, the, the purpose of the notice is to inform people that their road, which perhaps was maintained at one point, is no longer good for being maintained. But, so even though that the town has never maintained this road, you still are required to send the notice to the butlers. And at the public, you need, you know, you, you can hear testimony from a butler as to whether they use the road or not. And if the Select Board determines that it really is no purpose served on keeping that road, or it doesn't want to maintain it, and that the road really isn't used, that actually that is a key criteria, that really isn't used, except perhaps by one person, if, if at all, the town could, the Select Board could vote that it's, that it doesn't want to maintain it anymore and take that vote of discontinuing maintenance. Once that's done, that's filed with the town clerk, and you post signs on both ends, then the town no longer has any liability for maintaining the road. But members of the public still have the right to use the road, to the extent that they had such rights in the first place.
Joe? Just one more quick question for the chair, please.
Yes.
Sharon, in this case, it's only the one owner, and I just, I'm just curious, could that owner push back against the town or put the town in a precarious position as a result of that? There's only one butler.
Well, it's, it's, there's not much scope for damages due for discontinuance of maintenance, especially where the town has never maintained it. So, you know, the, the town never did anything, so there's no cost that the, that the owner is suddenly required to bear. There may be damages if you went to town meeting to discontinue the, the road, but the cases say that, you know, as long as there's access to a public way, there are no, the damages are likely to be nominal, but then there are other considerations that could come into play, and, and you could be sued for damages.
Anybody have any other questions?
Could I make, could I make a point?
Name and address.
Robin Soderberg, Three Ridge Road, a lot of butler to Mr. Zaltley's property. I've lived there for forty.
Are you a butler to the road?
Not to the road, no, to Zaltley property.
Okay, so what does this have to do with the road?
Well, a certain neighbor about the amount of money that's been spent or could be spent. I just want to give you my insight into the use of that road, what, what has been used over the past, I've been there forty years. I was unable to walk down that road for twelve years due to Maple Sugar Lines across the road. And my own opinion is that if you keep the road as is now without cease-ing maintenance, I believe the town has more liability than is, as opposed to cease-ing maintenance. Because right now, there's really nothing blocking anybody from going down there, except for the big. for the big bullies that Joe put there, or his crew. You can get around them, people have driven around those. So I think by ceasing maintenance, you post it at both ends, pass it your own risk, the town's alive for anything. Right now, I think there's more life. My own opinion, that's it. I'm the attorney.
Anybody else have anything? Any motion?
I'd like to make a motion that the select board move forward with the discontinuance maintenance of Wachusett Road as a public way under GL eighty-two, Section thirty-two A. And that would involve posting for a hearing and everything to go forward, notify the butlers and post a hearing. I'm really, really struggling with the amount of time and money that it's going to take to get that road anywhere near. And this would allow us to not have to have that hanging over our heads and then be able to, at some point down the road, consider reversing that or not. I mean, it's not a be-all, end-all, but in my mind alleviates that financial piece.
I second that motion.
Did you get all that to me, Tim?
I did.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Nay.
Benoidi?
Whitman I. And Sharon, I think in your email, you had laid out the process for the public hearing and everything, so if we have any follow-up questions, I assume you that Carol or Lindin can reach out to you to verify that we're following that process appropriately.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much, I appreciate your time and answers back and forth on it.
Thank you. All right. Discussion and possible action on Glenwood Place extension as a private way. You received a request. Did this go through you, Joe? Mr. Blair's request regarding the extension?
It did, and I sent it to the board because it's ultimately a board decision. We did some recent, can I interject a little?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Chairman, when we received the request from Mr. Blair, I talked to the town clerk, and previously, the board had established a list of gravel unimproved roads that they plow in snow events, and I believe it was made finite. So to add, we're being asked to add a street to plow in snow events, an unimproved gravel road, that will remain private. So we sent it back to the board for review. I'll be frank with you, I don't know the procedure that the board followed in twenty-eighteen I wasn't here, but I believe there was an attempt to make the list finite.
I do believe that it was determined that there would not be any additional roads
No additional roads to it, yes, I do remember that.
And even though it's a short extension of a road, it's still, you know, we're going down the wrong path if we start accepting additional private roads. I don't know, who we built's opinion is on it.
I kind of agree, I mean, we're struggling with Wachusett Road and the time and investment from that versus existing public roads, active public roads in town. I feel like this is, even though it's a very short piece, it's again directing resources that could be better spent on existing public ways.
I mean, I think we just needed to review it because we received a request from the owners.
Could I address the chair, please, one more time?
Yes.
When I talked to the clerk, it wasn't clear if the list that you made previous in twenty-eighteen, if you were able to close it like you did. That piece, I honestly don't know, you may want to research that a little more.
I think that basically we established a policy that we would no longer accept any additional private roads regardless, so, right? I mean, that's kind of been the, I mean, there was a period we weren't even, weren't even plowing, a short period, weren't going to even plow private roads at all, so I think at that point when we decided there was some kind of obligation to ones that we had historically done, we limited it to past, yeah, past history. Tim, you want to identify yourself and address?
Yeah, this is Tim Narwhal, one forty-nine Palmagussa Road. I thought, and this is before Joe took over, that during the planning board stage of that, that there was a distinct line of egress, or line that was by Mr. Keller, of where it was town road and where it was private way. That was established, again, twenty-eighteen seems like a little early, but that might have been the timeframe, that that was established with the DPW director at that time. So I thought... Oh, I'm sorry.
Were you talking to Glenwood Place?
Yeah, Glenwood Place.
Yeah, it's the local, that's it, that's the end of it.
We're not disputing that that end of it is private. They're just asking us to continue on and plow it.
As it was a public way, then, correct?
Right.
Right.
Okay, I apologize. I thought they were asking for it to become a public way, and that's what my confusion was.
They just want us to continue down the road and plow and maintain it, as if it was a continuation of the approved road. So they realize that section is private.
Okay, so that's still up to the homeowners or whatever, homeowners agreement or whatever to take care of all of that.
Correct.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Thanks. Joe, did you have it? Any other discussion or questions regarding? I don't know if I need a motion just to, in response to Mr. Blair's request, send a...
Make a motion that a lot of be sent to Blair or whatever builders...
CB Blair Development Corporation?
Corporation Builders, whichever, that is a private way and is to be maintained by him or his...
Homeowners Association.
Homeowners Association.
And that just that the board is not entertaining any additional...
Right, we're not entertaining any to-do of our plowing it or maintaining it.
Whitman I, stop second.
All right, any other discussion? Roll call?
Clock I.
Benoidi?
Whitman I.
Indigo I. Thank you. Right. Agricultureism Sign, Lilac Hedge Farm, select board to vote to approve installation of sign on or about Route sixty-eight, written approval required from the select board.
So moved.
Move that a second.
We could go into detail for this for hours, and it's just...
No, I just mildly so moved, but I just...
There's one down on Route one-twenty-two in Holden, that state road, that all...
You have a motion, do we have a second for discussion?
I'll second for discussion, because I would like to consider an amendment, just that it goes through, and shares that it goes through Director Buckley for placement, because that intersection at sixty-eight and Wachusett is horrendous as it is, so I just want to make sure that it's explicit that if it, I'm pretty sure the state's going to say sixty-eight is a town road, and then that would go through Director Buckley, and I just want to be very conscientious of that, it's going to be near that intersection, and how that's going to affect line of sight, and so that Director Buckley is in on that. That's my...
Has this sign been approved by the planning board? Has it come to the planning board?
No.
We got a signed bylaw in town, that's why I asked.
So Director Buckley had emailed us and asked that it go through the permit, the correct permitting process because it is a town road, so all the parties involved, so that needs to happen.
So I would theoretically think it's going to go to the planning board for this, because we're going to sign bylaw in this town.
Right, so I don't know, do we not, do we make a motion?
I would send my motion to allow the staff, and without going through proper procedures.
Okay, I was going to say, either that or do we make the motion and say that it must meet...
Contingent on approval by the planning board.
Or that theoretically, that, you know, maybe we wait, but that the select board is in favor of it in general, but it needs to go through the proper channel.
I think the only timing issue is it's a grant application, if there's a timing thing that we don't want to... So I don't know if we can condition it or not. We don't have anybody from Lilac Hedge here?
No.
I'd be, you know, I would, I feel bad if there was a time limit of their application, and if we could approve a contingent on those issues, it might...
Right, because that was my other question, if it needed to go through planning board because of the signed bylaw, which Carol, you know, so those are the two situations that we need to get.
So they don't lose the monies that could be had.
So we could, you know, make it contingent on approval by planning board and review by DPW director for placement, or something like that. Does anybody think that?
Norman, Joe, you guys are here, do you mind, is that acceptable on your guys' process?
Well, you're conditioning it so that they can't do it until it does receive planning board approval.
So then maybe we should request it be put on your agenda so that Lilac Hedge can get to you people, instead of getting it fluffed off a month down the road when we don't really have the time.
I think Lilac Hedge should...
Well, we're going to do it for, or I'm going to do it for, I'm doing this for Lilac Hedge.
Okay, all right. Joe, do you have a comment or question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, similar to Palmagussa, and I said this in the email, the board can issue permission to put a sign in the right of way. I think that's all you do pending proper permit process, and I think you'll be all right.
All right, do you want to make the motion?
I'll make a motion that the board approve the agricultural directional signage request from Lilac Hedge pending planning board signed bylaw approval process and input from Director Buckley in place, location placement.
Did you get that taken?
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Clock I.
Benoidi?
Whitman I.
Indigo I. Next for discussion is ARPA fund motion, funding for two projects for DPW, one project for fire. I don't know, do you guys want to go, take it one by one or? So I guess we'll discuss each proposal, so the first one is to vote to approve one-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-two-hundred dollars of ARPA funds to complete a townwide new drinking water source and investigation study. Do we have any information on that?
Would you like me to address the chair?
The board, yeah.
The board in time. I don't have to repeat myself, we only have the one drinking water source, which is our Muscat River reservoir, we have no out-of-town connections, we have no backup for our drinking water supply here in town. The purpose behind the study is to hire a hydrogeologist to model the town and do some test wells, to produce a second well, a well site for a second source. If, for whatever reason, we're unable to develop a second source based on that study, we'll look to tie to possibly Holden or some other town. But the purpose behind that is to hopefully develop a second source here in town.
It's going to take a hundred, through the chair, one-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand dollars to do a big investigation study?
It also includes test wells.
Still sounds like a, I can get a three-hundred-foot well drilled at my house for five thousand bucks.
But you can't develop a municipal well, and that's a much more complicated process.
Well, so they put in a ten-inch pipe instead of a four-inch pipe. I don't know, it just seems like it's awful expensive to me, but I don't know, it's up to the rest of the board.
And the board can, you know, we can postpone making a decision until we have a town administrator to review the ARPA funding, I mean...
I'm a little, I mean, personally, I know that these are on the agenda, and I know that they've been in the works through the kind of ARPA committee and everything, I'm also a little hesitant with out having a town administrator in office right now, that we move forward on spending ARPA money. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that. Like I said, I understand that these projects, I think, have gone through the ARPA committee and everything, but I don't...
So we could make a motion to kick this off to the next meeting, hopefully to have a town administrator in place to review the proposed projects.
So with money like this, did it go to CIPC? Did any of this go through them people? I mean, do they have to?
Did CIPC review any of this?
If I could direct the chair and the board, ARPA funding is voted by the ARPA committee and then sent on to the board, the select board for approval.
So that means no...
So CIPC did not review...
Okay, that means no, all right.
But it's also not required for this process.
Unless we require it.
Unless you require it.
So the question was just, we wanted to know if there was any input from them? They have not given any input?
It's tough, because I know how important it is for the town to have an additional water source or additional water sources, and so I, I think that we, I'm not arguing that this is necessarily a bad use of funds, I also would like, I don't know what it would cost to then get us that additional source, and, you know, there's a lot of, you know, we're spending this money, but what's going to be the next step to get us there? You know, because I think I had asked specifically about the cost to tie into the Quavens, since we have the Aqueduct going through town and everything, so I don't know...
Yeah, I think this, you know, it's probably better due diligence to make sure that all sources are reviewed before. I mean, I know there's an ARPA committee, but I don't think that that's sufficient to just say we're going to spend the money on whatever the group says. They can make recommendations, but they're not, they're not going to make the determination on it, and we're going to want, you know, certain backup and maybe checking with capital improvement or checking with other resources before we just make decisions on, because this is grant funds, but it's still money that's going to the town that can be used in a lot of different ways. Tim, you had a question?
Yeah, and this is through the chair to Joe. Joe, is this a proposal from Weston and Sampson that we've used reliable, trustworthy engineering company?
Yes.
So that right there should give the board and/or anybody else confidence that we're not using a fly-by-night outfit, we use somebody that has given us fair and equitable costs for engineering and a product that we went out and gave a specification for. So I'm confused on the review, if we've given Weston and Sampson a specification of what we want to do, they've come back with a cost, a proposal cost, that was sent to the ARPA committee to review, and it was, I'm guessing their goal was to make sure that it fell within the ARPA requirements, and then forwarded on the select board for approval. So I'm struggling with why the town can't move forward since we're in desperate need of a second source with this study. I get it that it's a big number, but being in engineering, this doesn't look like a big number to me when I do studies. So that's, that's just my opinion, that's all, that's it for me.
Does anybody have any other questions?
I have one other comment, if I could just address the board quick, please.
Yes.
The town has done research of this nature at least twice before, and produced studies and done analysis on connecting to the Quavens. I can make those reports available, they've done it probably two or three times in the last fifteen years. All that type of work has been done. We also applied for an MVP grant to try and get funding from the state to go forward on this same task, and the number was very similar, and we didn't get grant funding, we tried twice. So I would give some thought to it, and I can fully respect that you'd like to talk to CIPC, and I can see why you'd want to get an administrator on board or some administrative help, but I professionally don't consider the number unreasonable, and I'd like to go forward with it when you get a chance. Thank you.
Have you done this three times?
I mean, I'm really torn on this, because I... I think I've been one of the biggest opponents about finding an additional water source in town, getting, we owe that to our townspeople to, to do that. If, if we continue to allow water and sewer connections, we owe it, in my mind, to all of town to invest in that exist, in, in that larger infrastructure. Um, so it's gone through the ARPA committee and, um, it's, I, I know it's been iterations and iterations, and so I guess I struggle a little bit with the cost, it's, and I don't have the total off the top of my head as what we have left for ARPA funds, um, for the town. Um, but I think, you know, I'm, I guess I'm leaning more now, more towards wanting to say okay with this money and move forward with the study because it's something, like I said, I know I've been pushing for, for, I think since I've been on the board, is we need to find more water.
Through the board, chair if I may.
Yes.
If we've done all these studies, we must have an idea of where we wanna put this well. If you had done several of these studies in the past.
I personally was not involved in the studies, but I did read what was done. Um, they date, I wanna say two thousand and five, sometime in the early two, eh, mid, like, two thousand and ten, around that time. There were some test wells that were done probably in the eighties and nineties, but the technology has come quite a bit since then, um, and it requires some intense modeling, so I would like to think that updates in technology will produce a better product. What I can tell you is, we did look at tying into the Quabbin, and we did look at tying into Holden.
Well, I know we did that, I do remember that, and it was cost.
Amount of meeting, calling back.
The other thing I would, I would caution, and again, I forgot to follow procedure, I, I'm just answering this question directly.
I mean, I know the original concern was not having a town administrator on board as we go through spending this money.
And then.
We're only on the first one right now, and I don't know that two weeks is gonna make that big of a difference.
I don't think it will.
I'd like to make a motion that we just table this for, until we can get a, a town administrator in place, and this is something that they'll, they'll have to manage, and I think you're, with, all three of them, I, I would suggest all three of them. It's part of the management of the ARPA funds, and I think it would be good to have them, the person involved from the start.
Well, so, good night.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Clock eye.
Benoid eye.
Benoid eye.
And nickel's eye, so we'll just table it to the next meeting.
May I just ask one question about number two for future, not to, for discussion now, but, um, for number two, for the, um, community center and library work, does that include not only the siding and windows, but also all the trim work and any other additional work that may get busted up?
We don't have that information, so I, what's the such even looking at this? There's no backup information whatsoever. In my, unless I, no, unless I'm not seeing it. What does it cover, how much does it do?
We'll have all that information.
All right, so, okay, on to town municipal trash dumpster and recycling agreement, selecting, uh, select board to approve and sign new three-year agreement with Republic. This is the dumpster contract. This is also a dumpster for our funds.
I thought this was gonna help.
Huh?
I thought this was gonna help.
This, this is a contract to sign, to re-sign, to recontract with, uh, Republic, who does the town.
Oh, for just the town, town.
Just the dumpster, all right.
Town office dumpsters, dumpsters. So it's just a renewal contract, I believe that they, that the price is fixed, um, for a year with a maximum of three percent increase over the next year, two and three.
Motion to sign.
Do it second.
Motion to have the chair sign, the whole board doesn't need to sign.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Clock eye.
Benoid eye.
Benoid eye.
And nickel's eye. Discussion, um, prison camp projects, select board to approve contracts to purchase a gate and fence. And we have a representative from the historic, so do, so now, so you provided this information to us, correct? Correct.
And if I may, this is from the, um, uh, money from the state, so to kind of save the budget.
Yes.
Yes, that's, uh, part of, the expenditure is to be out of the fifty thousand dollars, uh, of state funds.
If I may, do you have the grant on file with, um, the town administrator's office? I'm just wondering to complete this.
I know Ron was aware of it, um.
I don't know, if you have a, I, I don't know if it's there, perhaps you could just resend it or something, you have it.
I don't think, I have.
You don't think you.
I think it went to Ron and then he informed me of it, I think that's how it happened. 'Cause I have, I don't have that. Or you could ask, uh, Senator Goby, she might be able to get you that information.
Okay.
I would just confirm with this administrator's office that all the paperwork and everything is met.
'Cause we're, we're asked, being asked to sign monetary contracts that will probably be granted, but I just want to have that close a little bit.
Okay.
The promise of the funds to be either reimbursed or however it will work.
Yes, I believe, yeah, I believe Senator Goby sent that. I can't remember if it was September or November. But somehow, I think it was back in November, we were made aware that the, that the town was in charge of the fifty thousand dollars, specifically the historical commission would be responsible for figuring out all the, all the details, all the fencing and all the stuff that's coming before you.
Thank you, we'll find it.
Okay, thank you.
So we're looking at two different contracts, correct?
Uh, for.
One is for fencing and one is for signage?
Yeah.
For a gate, a fencing gate.
Fencing, gate and signage.
Yes, through the chair, it's, uh, three contracts.
All three?
So that still would be, you would have one for the fencing, there was one for the main sign, that should be dated
Really, so.
mid-February, and there should be one for the six smaller signs.
Do you, do you have three, Leah?
Yeah, three, so two are from fossil industries?
All right, that's what you have from, yeah.
One, and then one is from, um, Miller Fence Company.
I don't, I don't see the other one, my, my.
These look like the exact same thing.
See, look, like, look at the dates up at the top, one, one should be two eighteen twenty-two, and one should be three seven twenty-two.
Okay. Okay, I see, so.
I'm gonna be, since these are in the state park and prison camp, do they need to go, follow the planning board sign by law process?
No.
I, I, I don't think so.
It doesn't, it's a nonprofit to begin with, and write off, you can put up a sign as big as it's rooming water.
Like it up?
Don't do it.
And if I may, Pe- Peter, you, the historical commission has, um, worked out what's on the signage and everything, um, or you will be, or?
We will be, uh, we, we've, we've determined the main sign. Uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, basically kind of a pamphlet of sorts, we'll be adapting that pamphlet from, uh, Jeff Kennedy, I believe his name is. And then he also had a map of the site that he was going to allow us to use.
I think I saw everything up at the historical society open house, not this past weekend, I didn't make it, but the previous one, so.
Yes, so it'll be kind of a conglomeration of that, we'll use the text from the pamphlet and that map. And we might need to modify the background of the little text boxes just to make it look easier to, to see.
And then my other question, 'cause we ran into this with, um, the wood roof and everything, is because it's, um, is, um, does it meet prevailing wage, does everything meet prevailing wage?
This is who the state uses now, right, for their signage, and now, or?
Uh, fossil was what DCR recommended to us, we went through the request for propose, uh, request for, request for quotes. Um, we did include the prevailing wage, uh, stipulation for the fencing. I believe we needed to do it for that. I believe the signage was just, uh, we purchased an item.
And then, sorry, sorry. Will DPW be installing them, will, um?
No.
I believe it's DCR that'll be installing the signage.
Yep.
And then we had to do the prevailing wage for Miller Fence because they would be installing the fence, they would be going on, we'd have to coordinate with DCR.
Thank you.
Carol, Carol?
No, Tim.
Oh. Tim, you had, had a question?
Yeah, through, I just wanted to make sure you understand, the way the sign law, sign by law is set up is for cultural and historic, that there's no permit required as long as the sign does not exceed six square feet. So if it's larger than that, it will need to go through the sign by law.
On, on, on state property?
Um.
Right, state property, not you. State property, nonprofit?
So it's a ru- so there's a whole state procedure that they have to go through, is that correct, or?
No.
Does state have a procedure?
No, they don't, not that I know of.
I can't believe the state just allows signs to be put up because there are specific signs on highways, that are state highways that have to be a certain size, so I can't believe the.
They're the ones.
We're talking DCR, not state.
They're the, they're the ones making rec- recommendations, so.
I don't understand, it's DCR, that's, that's not the highway.
Right. I mean, it's, it's not town property, so I don't think we can tell them what, what they need to do, to do as far as their signs. We can just, we're just approving the contract, the, approving the use of the funds.
Right. Yeah, but where are the funds and who's the fu- and, and who, what's it representing, right? Is it representing the town of Rutland?
It's, they still go.
It's a prison camp.
Yeah, it's a prison camp, it's.
It's the prison camp, yeah.
It was money that, it was money that, um, Senator Goby and Representative Ferguson, um, had, got in the state budget as a grant for us for, um, to work towards saving or reconstructing or memorializing the prison camps, and so that money, um, I think is available through, is, was sent to us via a grant, and I think we had asked, um, the town administrator to pass that on to the historical commission to work with, um, the senator and representative and DCR and the other involved parties to move forward, um, for the best use of funds, uh, of those funds. So I know that they've had a number of, uh, public information sessions, and people could go out and tour the, the prison camps and everything, and they took that feedback, um, back and discussed through their meetings, I believe, if I'm speaking correctly, Peter. So I think that it's followed the process, I just, and it sounds like they've been in consultation with DCR and Senator Goby and, um, Representative Ferguson's offices, kind of throughout the process, so, um, we should be okay there, I just wasn't sure if, uh, planning, if planning board needed to cover anything, um.
No, London was right, and so was, if it's state property, we don't have any authority over it, I just, I, I didn't know it was on straight property 'cause that wasn't described, there was no maps or anything like that, so my, when I heard it was cultural or historic, I just wanted to put the fact out that, uh, the sign by law does allow exemptions up to six feet on town property, so they don't need a permit as long as it's below that, then it can be whatever, to what Skip said, it can be whatever size it is, so, okay, I just, I just know DCR stuff.
Hey, see you later, Tim, bye, let's move on. God, you could be here all night long.
Do we have any other con- like, questions or concerns?
I would make the motion, oh, sorry. So we haven't seen the grant, we don't know what the reimbursement process is. So how do we know that A, we know what the reimbursement process is, and B, that we have the money? Because what concerns me is, is we're gonna approve these purchases, and no one's seen the grant, and no one's seen the reimbursement process.
But it can be contingent on verifying the funds come through the grant.
So that was gonna be my motion, was to verify the grant and then we'll find.
'Cause Carol brought that up to make sure that.
I just wanna make sure we're not spending ARPA funds, I wanna make sure we're not spending other funds if we're not
Right.
aware.
And I know for this, there's a Ju- uh, June thirtieth deadline, 'cause it has to be this fiscal year that the money is spent, so I wholly understand your concern, and my motion was going to be contingent on that the grant could be.
We just have to make sure that we have somebody who can fill out the reimbursement process, that's the problem.
Right.
So I'll second your motion.
So I was gonna make a motion that the board.
She's got it already.
You have it all?
She's good, let me tell you.
Any other discussion?
She's a mind reader, but she gets it.
Clock eye.
Benoid eye.
Lloyd man eye.
And nickel's eye, thank you. Thank you. All right, discussion on Little League donation to scoreboard Central Tree Middle School. Do you have some information, so do you wanna?
Sure, Jonathan Miller, uh, twenty-seven Brunel Drive, from the president of, up in Little League. Um, every year we send, uh, spend tens of thousands of dollars fixing up the fields in town. Um, from fencing, this year we just spent, uh, fifteen thousand dollars fixing the fences at every, uh, baseball and softball field in town, fixing the holes, uh, all the damage that's been done over the years. Um, adding to that, we need to, uh, improve the field for the girls in town. Um, obviously, the, the baseball program has marsh field, um, and we've been lucky to have that leased because it allows us to do an awful lot of improvements, um, on our own there. Um, but, uh, one of the things the girls have always been asking for, for the softball field is a scoreboard. Um, and so, uh, the league is in a position this year to purchase a scoreboard, uh, and donate it to the town. Um, because of the cost of running electricity, the only place we can put this, um, scoreboard is to attach it to the side of Central Tree Middle School. Um, I've talked to, uh, the principal about this, uh, he is fully in support of it. Um, I gave you guys a map of, of where it would go, it's facing the field, um, just above the, the first base dugout. Um, the overall cost to the, to the league is gonna be about between five and six thousand dollars to do it, including running the electrical to it, um, and mounting it to the side of the building.
So is it actually on the roof?
No, it'll be on the side of the building, there's a, there's a, that bump out, um, it'll just mount on the side facing the first baseline there.
By the picture, it looks like it's on the roof, but it's.
Yeah, 'cause.
It's not the roof, it's the side of the building.
Is that red that's on here, that's for the sign?
Yes, that's the, that's the red, that's the place it would go. It's a, um, eight by four, um, eight by four foot scoreboard. It's LED lighting, so, uh, the, the cost, the annual operating cost will be minimal, I figure, um, it'll run for about fifty hours in a year. There's about twenty-five games that get played on that field, um, my estimate, between rec and, uh, middle school softball.
Is there like an expected life fund or something like this, as far as?
Um, you know, it's, it's hard to say, I've been, you know, affiliated with, with Little League for, this is my tenth year, uh, with the league, we have done zero maintenance on the one at Marsh in those ten years, and it's, that scoreboard at Marsh stood for ten years before I, before I got involved.
And so where, where are the controls of this?
It's wireless, so it's just, it's a wireless control that you'd be able to run from, uh, chair by the field.
Okay. The line of vision is acceptable?
It's high enough, it's high enough over the squ- the, um, the first base dugouts, everybody who's attending the game would be able to turn and see the, the scoreboard. Like I said, we would love to put it at the tree line out in left field, um, but, you know, for a five thousand dollar scoreboard, it costs us ten thousand dollars to run the electricity between digging up the pavement from the school, um, and replacing it and, and running it all the way out there. This just made the most sense for a nonprofit to, you know, make an impact for the, the girls in our town.
Because it's not right on the field, I'm looking at the susceptibility of it, Pete, I don't, I don't know what that have, that, is that just a sidewalk? I'm just wondering if you, is it high enough that I can't go and look, look, and, you know, the, the, the young men showing how, how they can jump and smacking it and?
I mean, I mean, there's a, there's. I mean, I mean, there's a, there's a possibility that they can do that. I mean, I spend a lot of time at Central Tree, my wife's a teacher there, um, I've got two kids in the school. I, I've never seen anybody trying to jump and smack anything on that building. Um, I think, you know, the principal has a pretty good grasp of, of what's happening around there. And I just don't see it, I don't see it as an issue.
They have had kids on the roof before, but I mean, you're not going to stop them if they want.
Well, I'm sure it knows.
You're not, you're not going to stop them if they want to get to it, you know, that, that's what they.
So I had tried to figure out, since it would be going, the school is town property, but it's leased to the schools, how that process would work, and I think if the board approves it, we would just send a note to the school saying that this is our intent and, um, that there's, you know, negligible, um, you know, if they have any major concerns or anything, they should let us know, but we've, we're able to put the solar panels on the roofers and everything, um, without.
We're, we're just basically accepting the grant, and it's, the school is kind of really working with.
Gift, not that, right.
The, the, the gift, yeah.
The donation.
So, you, you're negotiating with the school all the details, right?
Yes, I've been in contact with the principal.
Is there a solar option for these?
So we, we looked at the solar, um, to put it away from the school building. Um, there was concerns with the manufacturer about the wind we have in town and whether branches would hit the, the scoreboard, we looked at a battery option, but to have somebody climbing a ladder to get the battery out of the thing, this made the most sense.
And I had asked it, um, that Jonathan talked to Recreation and DPW if there were any, you know, questions, concerns, anything. Clayton had emailed back saying she didn't have anything, and that she was fully in support, knowing that the girls could definitely use, um, a scoreboard and would appreciate it, and I think Joe seems to be.
I, I'm fine with it.
Okay. So did you make the motion, Mark?
So I'll make, I'll make a motion that we accept the, um, softball scoreboard donation from Rutland. Use baseball or Rutland Little League?
Little League.
Yeah, Rutland Little League.
I'll second that.
With appreciation.
Roll call?
Clock eye, and I thank you.
Benoit. Benoit, I thank you.
White man eye, thank you.
And Nichols eye, thank you as well, much appreciated. All right. Next is Mass Home Growers Agreement regarding an extension of an expired contract.
Uh, through the chair, I better refuse myself in this.
Hello, everybody. Uh, yes, my name is Sean Moore, um, I'm a member of the Mass Home Growers, uh, company, local company that was formed to, uh, hopefully have the best interest of the town, um, to, um, bring cannabis into, um, you know, into the community.
To the town itself and the community.
Uh, for what it can do. But, when we were awarded the contract eighteen months ago, um, we all know what happened eighteen months ago. Pretty much, everything was shut down. And now that, uh, with the shutdown, use of supplies through manufacturers, constructions, and just everything that's been, uh, available, is not available anymore due to shipping and costs and. Now that, uh, everything's starting to open back up, uh, fortunately, that's a good thing, but unfortunately for us, it's when our contracts ran out. Our host agreement with the town, uh, is what I feel, and the town felt extremely beneficial for the town. Not only, uh, what we're offering the town in our agreement, but being run by local residents. I myself, one of them, as long, as well as the other members. Uh, I do have, uh, just to give an idea, um, from companies, that this is what, um, companies are. Just keep me this up, I just could have. This is going to explain that manufacturers, uh, are behind in the supplies that they're offering to companies. We're not a construction company, but we use them. So, this is a timeframe with they're running behind on. And just overall, this pandemic in the past eighteen months of what our contract was, has proven as halted us by an act of God. But we're confident now that, uh, we have, these companies are getting the supplies that, everything's opening back up. And so we're confident, um, we can get the ball rolling and starting the special permitting process. We have the plans, we have the designs, we have everything in place. What we don't have are materials, uh, and which, because of this pandemic that shut everything down, um, inhibited us. But they're coming back, these companies are coming back, and even though they're behind, they are coming back. So we're confident that if we can get another eighteen months extension, we'll have everything available. To get the ball rolling. I mean, it's not really so much our ability to do, it's what's available, the ability. Sure, and this is Roland Goury, he's one of our consultants, who is very experienced in the chemistry, and also building these type of complexes, uh, and what it takes. You can stand up.
I don't know if I want to, am I supposed to stand up?
No.
Excuse me, excuse me, uh, and just going over and cutting back to what he said, um, with the pandemic going on, it is a main reason why a lot of the facilities, uh, have had to get setbacks in shipping and, and, uh, everything, uh, as far as, uh, from getting their proper permits and, and everything taken care of, it's set back, most of these companies that have specific guidelines to, uh, apply to us, to say, hey, we have sixteen to twenty weeks to do this, and, or we have twelve weeks to do this. Well, a lot of the setbacks, they're trying to let us know right here, uh, in the letter, and let you know in the letter that, um, they're ready to go. Uh, just with the, uh, with the COVID and everything going on with shipping, they were set back to a point where it was very difficult for even them to, to maintain their, their, uh, their numbers and their, their weekly output. But where they are now, after, uh, multiple meetings with Rebecca and Judah, who are also part of this company that's low, uh, pretty local out of South Windsor, Connecticut, they are up to par, they are up to speed. It's basically hindering on, um, uh, the building process is actually pretty easy. These are prefabricated, uh, buildings, but they have to make sure they go by obviously proper town guidelines and, and, uh, one of the hard parts that's been with us, when we kind of probably could have got a little bit earlier on it, was the freezing process here in New England, we have to pour concrete when it's possible and to make sure, possibly, make sure we don't have any, uh, any future problems with, with, uh, with the foundation of the equipment, so. That's probably another setback that we kind of had during some of the timeframes. Uh, but mostly, uh, the company itself just not being able to make sure they could produce every aspect for us completely. And then after a good meeting with Judah and their staff, uh, they're ready to go. On this year, they've been, they've had everything kind of put together in their warehouses and, and pretty much are, are ready to go forward with, uh, with most of their customers this year, so.
Yeah, our, uh, company and the host agreement that we have, uh, we feel still that it's a huge benefit to the town. And it, it's not really so much, really, it's truly an act of God that stopped everything, and forgive us for not being able to, to magically make materials appear that are being shipped from other countries or you made here in the United States because people aren't making them, they've been shut down and locked inside their houses. But that's changed now, and knock on wood, this thing that's caused it, pandemic, mostly. Just the fact that when all of us were wearing masks and hopefully this thing is gone, and that people can get back to work. And that's one of the things that we hope to bring into town is work. I mean, this, not only to bring in funds generated from taxes, just to bring in jobs and.
Everything from electrical, the HVAC, to grounds maintenance, to security, um, making sure local police know everything that's going on.
It's just that the, the timeframe of our contract, when we were awarded our contract.
Unfortunately.
God decided to slap, slap this planet with a virus that shut everything down, which inhibited us.
Inhibited our progress in order to get, get going a lot further.
And just now that it's starting to get back up, is when our contract is out, so we're, we're asking for a, a re-extension to give us.
We're asking for a lot longer, a little bit extra time, just in case anything like this does happen.
Well, no, eighteen, I mean, we're going to ask for the eighteen months again, we're not going to ask for a few more.
No, 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 yeah, I was agreeing with that, I just wanted to make sure you understand that it's, it's not going to take eighteen months to get this project done.
No, no. It just has buffers in, in the timeframe, because you know, so you're even talking about different strands, and we all can get shut down again. It's, it's really disturbing how this is really, you know.
Slow everything down.
We're all recovering from it. I mean, businesses are starting to open back up, hopefully we're in the process of beginning anew. And that's what we're asking for, for a new timeframe.
Why didn't you approach us before the expiration?
Well, we were hoping, uh, just because of, of what's been going on.
Uh, a, a lot of that had to do with them requesting, uh, excuse me, Grossman, the company, having to find a request to where they were going to find out for product. So, a lot of that time, took time to come back to, to, to them, to let them know even if they were going to be able, possible, to do it right off of that, with a lot of the shipping restrictions. Aluminum, full aluminum clad building is not exactly easy to just come by.
I mean, the due process part of it, while we waited, it is kind of moot on the point. We tried to get it done by the time our contract was up, uh, because of circumstances.
Right, but there had to be some point you knew you weren't going to be able to meet the, the contract.
We always have hope, man.
Right, but you still, just as a buffer, and to be safe, you would try to extend your contract when it's coming to an end. Be my concern.
Well, we would have tried to ask a little bit earlier, but once again, the, the, the foreigner, the foundation.
Well, it really has nothing to do with the making of it. I mean, it's just, yes, we could have reached out and sent emails and had this meeting, but it's only been a couple days since our contract is up. Due process takes time, and, and government, we all know.
Well, I know, and that's why you have to allot for time.
Exactly.
Did you know that it's going to take longer than?
Well, we have, we have been keeping up with, on our process. I mean, it's just, it's not like I've been having in, in the dark on it. I mean, I've started a special permitting process with the planning board. It's just that, um, submitted to the select board, because the select board grants the host community agreement.
When was your last meeting with the planning board?
Well, we haven't had meetings with the planning board, that's because.
You just mentioned the planning board, so I wasn't sure.
It's a special purpose, you have to, you have to submit, uh, everything on, on, online, on the e-permitting. And, uh, you have the, uh, the documents and everything to show that we have the materials and we had, it just didn't meet the process.
Right, so, but you had mentioned the planning board, so did you have?
No, yeah, we're, we're, now that everything's being opened back up and we can, we have, I mean, you know this sense that we thought to submit the plans and engineering plans, when you don't have the materials to.
But whether they have the materials or not, it takes time for them to review and accept all that, those plans, so that would be part of.
That's why we're asking for this then.
Their inability to, to, to change their ways, they, a lot of the companies, if I may, a lot of the companies were not allowed to just go into other facilities or meet with other places. I had a previous job where I went into a lot of cultivation facilities, and that immediately stopped. I couldn't go to the front door, I couldn't do it, so there were so many things that was halted, ceased, because nobody had an implementation plan, nobody had a, a way to handle this, did we? We didn't have, we didn't know what to do right away.
A lot of people didn't have the people to do it either.
Part of my background is, uh, in the military, I'm a chemical defense specialist. So I used to handle a lot of this, and there's, there wasn't anything in place, in place for said company to help us out in order, so we could get things implemented, to have them even come meet with us.
It's really due to circumstances.
It's more circumstantial.
If, if, if it was, if this thing didn't happen, that put all these barriers for, not only just our company, but for companies around the whole world and, uh, you know, I think it would have been faster, but it's not.
It's a good chance.
Yes.
I do believe that you've been on the, been on our agenda twice in the past three or four months and have not shown.
Agenda. No? I've never submitted for.
Yes, I.
I've, I've never, our company has never submitted to come before this board, before, I mean, after getting the host agreement. If you could produce that, emails that I've sent personally.
I'd have to look back at agendas.
Yeah, I've never, I've never received anything from the town that even wanted to speak to us, so.
I, I do, I do think I recall something about you from, you're supposed to be on the agenda as well.
Yeah, I, I don't, I mean, I, I'll have to look back at the agenda.
There's nothing that, that I applied to, to come before the board, and if the town puts us on the agenda without notification.
I think it was emails that you had sent to, to Beth, requesting to be on the agenda.
That was for this?
Yeah, it's with this right here.
No, not previously.
No, not previously, yes.
I mean, like I said, I certainly understand the whole pandemic thing and everything else, but I guess any kind of evidence of any kind of process of doing anything, we just haven't seen anything.
Well, it represents you now.
But my hopes would have been before the expiration of.
I understand that.
If I may, through the chair, I mean, I don't think it's any surprise, it's any news to anyone here. I'm one of the probably bigger proponents of the board of pro marijuana. Um, I struggle a little bit with the fact that business has been continuing, town government has been continuing. We've had const, continual feedback from the, um, other establishments in town that have been trying to open, um, throughout. We've had businesses open during the pandemic, um, continued construction work throughout the pandemic and everything. So, I struggle with the lack of communication, that, hey, we're hitting these roadblocks or whatever, um, just so you know, that these are the steps that we've, we've accomplished thus far, this is where we're heading, that the, these are the roadblocks, whatever.
Well, we didn't, the next step after getting the host agreement is applying for the special permit, so there's really no need for communicating with you every day. The next, if you do due process, we get the host agreement, and then we go apply for the special permit. Circumstances inhibit us from applying for the special permit to meet that next process.
May I finish my, thank you.
Yes.
So, I struggle a little bit with the fact that here we are, twelve or so days after the expiration of the contract, and you're just now coming before us and not, not hear kind of.
I, I understand what you're saying.
May I please finish, may I please?
Go on, please.
May I please finish?
Yes, nobody's interrupting, I apologize.
I struggle a little bit just with that process, and that piece of respect, for me, I'm a big proponent of this, and I, and I try to be an advocate, but I need a level of trust, because I think we owe it to our townspeople to do these things well and have that level of trust. And I struggle a lot right now, that here we are, after an exp, after the expiration, and this is the very first communication that we've had either in, in person, that there's even been a holdup or anything. So, we don't have a sense as to, to where things stand, other than COVID hit and we haven't been able to do anything. I get it, COVID hit, and a lot has happened throughout COVID, and I understand it's impacted different industries differently. I'm not disputing that at all.
Absolutely, thank you.
I'm, also want to acknowledge that there's a level of communication and respect that I think that especially this industry in this town deserves, and I'm not getting that sense. And that's my struggle.
Well, I apologize if you feel disrespected, with all due respect, I mean, we have respect for the town and, you know, hope to have benefits for the town, so I apologize if you feel disrespected.
May I address? One of the main things that I really feel that is my responsibility, uh, working for them, is to make sure that we are great neighbors with the town. Um, that is one thing that is a key, uh, accomplishment in myself, is to make sure that we are following the guidelines for the town, making sure that the town is happy, making sure that we employ town employees as best as we can, and make sure that it works as best for the town. Aside of, of, of not providing you with, uh, due information prior to this, um, and like you said, uh, other different companies have opened and, 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 and gone about their business other ways. And, and once again, in our defense, uh, uh, we are a different type of company, getting a greenhouse to be shipped, a five thousand square foot greenhouse to be shipped across the country and manufacturing.
Cause now.
Across the, across, across seas, oceans.
A lot, a lot.
It's not, it's not, so, so with all.
And please, with all due respect, uh, if, if, I didn't, well, if our company didn't follow process by notification and, uh, actual due process for this contract. actual due process for this contract, I apologize. And if, if it's anything else besides that, I mean, I don't know what to say, I'm sorry.
So, in, in looking at emails, I see that you emailed us on August tenth of twenty twenty one, August thirtieth of twenty twenty one, October fourth of twenty twenty one regarding.
So, I have been keeping in touch.
March, to, to present, to, to come to speak to the board.
I, this, I don't think I've asked that. I've just been keeping notice.
August thirtieth?
And I've never received.
At August thirtieth, you said you were unable to attend. Sean is unable to be part of next week's Board of Selectmen's meeting. I've asked him to pick a future date, and we'll add him to the agenda at that point. That was on August thirtieth, from Beth. Um, March thirty fifth. Like I said, I mean, the whole board remembers that there were times that you were supposed to be on the agenda, so I don't know that you were, I don't know why you don't remember that, but there's, I have several emails.
Well, it's not that I remember, I don't know, so you can't say I, I forgot.
Well, no, but I do have the emails that say that you've, and emails from you regarding attending the select meeting. I just, that's, that was confusion for the board, because we all remember that you were on the agenda.
I don't have those emails from you, so I can't affirm or deny that.
Well, I, I can, I can send them to you.
Okay.
I have them.
Yeah.
I just want to clarify, because the board was very confused because you had been on our.
I just never requested, made a formal request to, to stand before this board.
I can send you the, the email stuff, but anyway, that's, that was just for clarification purposes.
Okay. That's what this is where we are, and, um.
So, if, I think, are, are options to extend the contract by a, a time up to eighteen months? I think that they're asking for eighteen months, but I think, um, may agree to an extension of the eighteen month expiration for good cause, which shall include the time required to pursue or await the determination of appeal of the special per, permit or other legal proceedings. So, it. It might be split in halves. To me, this reads that if they were farther along in the process and had hit hurdles, then we could have, I think we could, it's still in our purview if we wanted to extend, that we could. Um, the other option would be to not to extend, which would essentially cease this HCA, correct? And then the board would have the opportunity to go out for another request for proposals, um, for cultivation, I think. I'm not one hundred percent sure, though. Is that the process?
That's, that's my understanding of, of culture.
Or?
If I may, to the chair, I assure you, I, to be, now, we'll make an effort to be more communicative with, with the board, especially after we submit the, by due process, which is next, next steps.
I mean, I, I think if we're, we're considering extending, I, I definitely would have difficulty tying it up another year and a half without reassurance. Something's gonna happen, and finish off with the board first.
If I may.
Yeah.
And, uh, if we do consider extending it, because I don't want to deny anybody any other opportunity for a year and a half where, where nothing gets accomplished. So, if we make a commitment to extend it for eighteen months, and then we're eighteen months later and nothing's happened, that's not fair to anybody else who did, was denied the opportunity to
And.
present something.
If we were to open it, put it back out for, if we were to basically cease this, continue on with this expiration of this HCA, that wouldn't preclude this entity or any other entity, other, other, any other entities to apply or reapply under, should the board open another RFP? Is that correct? It doesn't preclude them from applying again.
We'd have another license, another license, so.
Right.
So.
Or if, like I said, if we extended it, what would be a reasonable short period of time?
If I may, is there any type of contingency we could put in at six months or nine months, so we could review and see how far along we've come, just to show?
That's kind of what I'm discussing, and if we're gonna consider an extension, I think we'd have to be much more of unlimited, so that we're not, as I said, tying it up and not allowing opportunities.
So, in reading this, that under, um, number seventeen terms, that second paragraph, in the event the company has not secured a final license from the CCC, and all necessary local permits from the town, and commenced operations at the establishment within eighteen months from the date of this agree, from the date this agreement takes effect, this agreement shall expire, and the company shall be required to negotiate a new HCA agreement in order to operate the establishment within the town. The select board, in its discretion, may agree to an extension of eighteen month, of the eighteen month expiration for good cause, which shall include the time required to pursue or await the determination of an appeal of the special permit or other legal proceeding. I kind of read that as that they're well under, that any, any indiv, any group is well underway in, in the process and not just kind of haven't really started, um, because I think what my understanding is the CCC licensure is a lot of time. So, even, you know, if you don't hit the ground running, you know, you kind of have to hit the ground running, you, you apply for.
If I may, we have applied to the CCC, Miss Whiteman.
In, in my mind, a company applies, responds to an RFP or a request for proposals, um, request for information, and then they're awarded it, and then sit on it for eighteen months, I kind of question the commitment level there to, to get, to get that process going. If you're kind of wanting to do all of these steps to get there, then you have it, and then you're just gonna sit on it for eighteen months and come and ask for an additional time. I kind of am, am without any, anything, any, any, any work done.
Good cause, as opposed to the contract, if I may, to the chair. I mean, that's what we're here for. This is a good cause to renegotiate this contract.
What do you mean, good cause?
Well, the, the reasons for us are inability is what, because of this pandemic, which is.
But, but a lack of showing any kind of movement isn't good faith.
I understand.
If I may, it wasn't that we didn't show, show lack of movement. I do, I do understand the lack of communication. The movement was put forward, it takes time for, when you do have the agreement.
Do you have any documentation to show any, any things that's been done in the last eighteen months to show that you've made progress in any way?
Uh, to work with the said companies, we could have that applied, knowing that they had to take time to take down our information, understand what we want.
And do you have plans?
Break down what we're looking for.
To be submitted to the planning board.
And understand.
Engineered plans.
And is there a site, like, a site pro, a site plan, like a site pick, a determine?
That all gets provided by that.
That all get put through the planning board.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And so, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not on the planning board, I don't, I don't know that process exactly. If it's a, if it's a matter of construction materials and, and equipment and all of that, I guess I struggle a little bit with why, why the work wasn't done with planning board leading up to this eighteen months. You know, you know where, you know where it wants to go, it fits in the zoning, you need to apply for special zoning, whatever the case may be, that would take time. Then it's gonna take time to get, to get the equipment or the materials or pour the foundation or, or whatever. So, I guess I'm struggling that it's kind of, we're gonna throw everything at COVID and blame COVID for everything, when we all, town government continued to function throughout COVID.
Absolutely.
We had meetings, all.
Partially, yeah, if I may.
Just don't. Thank you. Please.
All, all the, all the town boards and commissions continued to do their work. And yes, it may not have been to that entirely full capacity, but we didn't, it was a learning curve, and we kept going. And so that there was no, no reaching out to planning board to, that, these are the steps that we need to do to get here, and while we wait on this piece to do this piece. I understand that at some point, there's gonna be a bottleneck. I'm sensing that the bottleneck was that it never started, and that's kind of a little bit of my frustration also.
I don't think that it never started, because they were, we were actually due processing what we were looking to accomplish, the greenhouse, and picking out how are we gonna facilitate what we were given, the tier two, how are we gonna either do a, a full building, or you're actually gonna do a greenhouse? That takes time, that takes planning, that takes more than just a couple of weeks. Um, these plants take ninety to a hundred and twenty days, three or four cycles per year. Um, unfortunately, I, I, one hundred percent understand where the board is coming from, we're not getting the knowledge on understanding of where the procedures and the following that we're trying to do. I do know that, um, from positive experience, that, uh, a lot of companies were so hindered where they could not just come back to us. Everything was via, uh, a text or via Zoom, and they weren't allowed to travel. So, in order to get the, the gross man company over here, implementation for their company about allowing them to travel in between states was not put in. Thus, same thing for truckers, and a lot of other people were not allowed to bring equipment across state lines at that point in time. So, it did hinder us. The, the, the notion of, uh, not keeping you in line, I, I, I do apologize that.
And you as an owner as well.
So, all of the permitting and all the preliminary stuff.
It takes, it takes time, from what I'm understanding.
Why wasn't any of that submitted?
We need proof of purchases and everything to submit to, you know, on the e forms. It's a step by step process where you can't, you know, when you talk about bottlenecking, uh, applying for the special permit, we couldn't show, we couldn't purchase and get, I mean, to show evidence base that we have, uh, everything to go on the next step. We do now. It's just due to the timeframe, and that we're able to. I, I'm completely willing to give, like, a, a short review, like.
Step by step.
Step by step. Um, not the whole eighteen months, the eighteen months was going by the grace of the board. I mean, you go half of that, nine months.
I mean, I guess, I struggle with, and I don't know what the process is, if planning board, if anyone from planning board is, but we don't, I've never even seen a location of where this is going, and I think the previ, in, in previous iterations, that was kind of alerted fairly early to ensure that, that where it's going is going to be permitted properly and allowable, and allowable use, so that the materials that you're looking to purchase or the, the work that you're doing is going to actually fit in the space and, and be a viable space.
If I may, Miss Whiteman, God, you get your point. Uh, the select board doesn't, it's not really free to see that. You handle the host agreement, and the contract goes free. It just, then it gets to the planning board, and after that, you know, it's out of the selectmen's hands, once the host agreement.
And I'm not saying that the select board has any purview of where it goes. All I'm saying is, I don't know anyone in town, I don't, on town boards that are aware of where this is going, and so, I, to me, that's something that could have been worked towards throughout the pandemic, assuming it fits in the process. I'm going off in my head how things would go. I wouldn't wanna go out and purchase a five hundred square foot or however large greenhouse, that then I realize that where I'm actually gonna put it is not gonna fly with planning board. Like, so, I'm not sure why there wasn't even a, a FaceTime or an email with, with planning board and, and ensuring that the zoning requirements are met and everything.
I wanted to make sure that when we did start with the process on special powers, that we were complete in due circumstances.
I guess I'm still confused that you have to purch, you have to be able to purchase things prior to making all these plans. I, I don't understand that.
Be like buying all the materials to build your house.
You're not a contractor, I'm sorry. I'm not a contractor either, if I do the, the.
Some of the, if I may, if I may, some of the, from a previous job, um, some of the contractual materials, uh, were hard to come by individually.
But you had, you, you had to buy all that before you had?
No, if it's a matter of making sure you guys are up to date before, I assure you, really, it's not a matter of, uh, where we are now to get this ball rolling, and, and the only reason why we couldn't was because of what was ever be, what was being held up, in which we feel that's a good cause to come before the board.
I, I guess I don't have a full understanding about what was held up, uh, because, like I said, certain things, permits, plans, things like that. Certain things I would assume still could have been done. I, I, like I said, I'm struggling with what the, you had to purchase things prior to being able to, to submit any information to the board.
No, sir, it's not really what it proceeds, making sure that we had everything in place, so when we did present it, we could be confident that you're confident that we had it.
So, you have plans and everything there?
Yes.
And when were they actually obtained?
These, I mean, we worked with Grossman, um, since we started this process, uh.
What are the dates on the documents that you?
Well, these doc, these, I mean, this is just printout of it. So, I mean, it's, I mean, it's ready to be submitted.
Nothing's dated?
Well, it has been submitted, so I, I mean, because I have, once it gets submitted to the planning board, then, I mean, we've had them already approved. It's just that.
But you can't give me a date of when, when they were actually.
When the company formed the actual.
Right.
Yeah. Uh, I can get that back to you.
You don't, we get those documents, nothing has dates.
No, this is just a printout. This, these, these, um, as far as.
Basically like a layout plan for the greenhouse itself, to show off.
Yeah, I, I don't know if we want to just postpone this until they can show us what efforts, because I wanna see dates to show that you actually did something in eighteen months.
Sure, I understand.
And not that you did something two months ago, but you've been doing something through the process, and there's some kind of documentation for a good faith before we even consider any extensions. We wanna make sure that you've made an effort, and I, we understand the pandemic, the other hurdles that people have to, you know, go through, but we also don't want to deny anybody else an opportunity if nothing was just, nothing was just done in, in a year and a half. We want somebody that's going to show that they're gonna take action before we go and we tie something up for another period of time, in my opinion.
I understand.
I struggle a little bit, because by kind of not, by asking for additional information and kind of postponing any decision, then we're essentially granting them at least a, another slight extension, which is, if that's.
Well, at this, in my opinion, it already expires, so until we actually formally ex, accepted them, we're not granting them any extension,
Right, exactly. Right. But I think.
Unless we're gonna go right out and put a, a RFP on it.
Right. But I think technically, it expires.
It already expires.
It, it has expired, shall expire, and the company shall be required to negotiate a new HCA in order to operate the establishment within the town. So, and, I, I don't, I mean, I don't know. How much work do we want them to continue to do if?
Well, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm still baffled, because you have paperwork there, and nothing has a date on it. So, what did you bring?
Oh, did you just, just show that the plans are, are, yeah, everything will be submitted to the planning board, huh, in that.
Right, but this is due process, can I get, can I show?
Sure, yeah.
If I may approach?
Sure.
This is one of the, so this is dated back in twenty twenty one, um, when we were discussing on the type of greenhouse. There's multiple different types of greenhouses to format and work with candidates in. And this was a, a basic layout of the building, not exactly everything was going to go in. We talked about different trays, watering systems, and I think that's another page as part of it. And that's our host, I'm sorry, I try to, try to do a little organize myself. If I may, you could keep going. I think there's further. There's the rest of the contract. I apologize, I wasn't prepared to break you in my book. Yeah, so the beginning of it, um, same date, right here, and they gave us the same date for the remaining portion of the, uh, of the, uh, of the build out. I guess we discussed that a little bit further.
So, this was, uh, December? So, this was, I mean, this was only.
I'm sorry, uh, what was the date?
December.
Yeah, sorry, early, yeah.
So, we're talking that's just April, so this is only like the last four months, that this is the only thing that was done in that period?
No, 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 no. What's just showing you is that, and then prior to that, not being able to really do anything in December because of, obviously, pouring concrete, even though it's a small detail, but it is something that you can't avoid here in New England, so that's at least a two month.
Well, you weren't anywhere near ready to pour the concrete, because you haven't even got plans to the planning board or any kind of certification, so that really, so weather wasn't an issue.
But the question you had asked me, if there was any previous dates to this, where we were showing, we were actually trying to do this, and maybe the process were forward, and that's what I'm trying to show you right here. It wasn't just.
I assure you.
We didn't just show up.
So, this, I mean, we're talking that, like, maybe three or four months ago, this is, you know, the late, the only, the last, the only date of something that's been done on the project.
And that's just when it was emailed to us, not when we sat down and actually discussed it. I could ask them to actually give us a, a previous date in the, prior to that, because it took a lot longer than just, you know, a day to come up with all this information. It's a finite process to actually do this, so there's a lot more, obviously, you can see in the right.
These are just quotes on the greenhouses that you're talking about.
Correct, and the facility and stuff that's gonna be put inside.
Right. I still struggle that anybody would go out and purchase a however large greenhouse without having approval for where it's going to go.
I don't think they're, the, excuse me, I didn't interrupt you.
No, that's, I mean.
I'm so sorry. Uh, I don't think they have the the purchase. I think we needed to make sure and solidify what monies will be available after the agreement. It was time to make sure we knew what we could bring to the board. Once again, we do apologize for not bringing everything quicker to you or showing you everything. But I do believe that we wouldn't have been able to bring you too, 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 too much at a beginning portion because we weren't allowed to get any information. We, there's nothing, they couldn't even come across the straight line to help us. So we could talk all day long, but we couldn't really do anything for anybody. I, 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 once again, I.
Submit to the board to start the special permitting process without proof like that. A lot of this is ready to go, but it was.
We're ready to hit the ground running this year to make sure everything is, like I said, a good neighbor to the, to the town of Rowland. If it wasn't communicated earlier that we were, what we were doing, and I do apologize about that. That's not, but that's what I believe I was brought into town for.
I don't think it's the communicating because as you've said, the the select board was not involved. After we signed the agreement, we're done unless something egregious happens, I'm assuming. I think the problem is that the contract expired, you had a good lead up time. By by December, you knew this wasn't going to happen. Um, no way this was going to happen.
Yeah.
So why didn't you, that's, that's the communication. Why didn't you come to knowing that you had eighteen months and now you are exceeded that? On I.
If, if I may, to give explanation, if I may, uh, a lot's happened since. I mean, I myself came down with COVID, put me in, you know, in, in a hospital for three months. So many, uh, pieces of of this whole process have really been affected by this pandemic. And if it, I mean, we were inhibited on all factions.
We're looking for the board for a little leniency to understand that we ourselves were having a hard time trying to come together with information to properly give it to a board and make sure you guys are looking at it in a proper way. What could we have done even if we had gotten the information to you if we couldn't have moved forward? We would have had to wait.
You could have put, at that time, you knew that you weren't going to be able to meet the end of the contract. You would start talking to us about extending it before it expired. That's my concern.
Yeah. Would you?
Usually you extend a contract that exists. This doesn't exist anymore.
Previous.
So you're asking for an extension of an expired contract.
On a day that we were given, but I think the extension was requested prior to the date. Was, was the request of extension prior to the date? I'm just asking.
I have, the, the contract was signed.
No, the extension I was asking.
No, and I don't have the emails asking for, I'm as not, I'm not a chair, so I don't have the emails asking for that. So I know that it was entered into an agreement on September twenty first of twenty twenty, um, which then would put that at, I think that I had calculated that it's twelve days expired, twelve or thirteen, twelve days expired.
Absolutely. So so in September, October, November, December, January, February, and March. I'm I'm not a concrete person, but I know I can't pour concrete during that period of time. And then during, even during that period of time, while they were trying to figure out what type of building they're going to go through, they, I don't understand what.
I, I, I had a house fully built in February, including concrete floor.
Including concrete floor?
Yeah.
For a greenhouse or a house?
A house.
So these are different specifications for residential.
So I think we're still getting on the fact that you knew you weren't going to be able to meet the timeline.
Well, we really do know.
Because you knew you'd have these delays.
It was the, it was more of the impact of material, the reason why we weren't aware of the, uh, of the guidelines going on.
I, I kind of read the contract as it's, if there's a issue with getting the final licensure from CCC and or local necessary permits, um, from the town, then it's, uh, the board could or maybe should be amenable to to moving forward, to looking to extend the contract. I, there's, it. It's not that it's been tied up at CCC and it's not that it's been tied up at getting the local level permits from the planning board or ZBA or anything. It's, it's even kind of before that, it's, the, the tie up is even before that. You know, we, we know that there's been a lot of bumping around in in CCC, in the CC process, and people have been getting shuffled all through and everything.
Absolutely.
So if, if they were, they were on a list and that, and we knew, you know, we were, we can get updates as to where they are on the list, how it's moving, whatever, then I might be a little bit more amenable to it. I, I'm, I'm really struggling. I, I, I don't know.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I understand the COVID thing, but I really, really wish that that we had a little bit more to show that there was more effort during the, during the term of the.
I, I understand that. We're just here to ask for, for an extension. We figured that would be on the planning board's side to show our abilities. We can get that to you. I mean, like I said, it's not like we've been sitting around for eighteen months doing nothing. It's just the next step on, on, uh, on the government's side. That timeframe, due to the services, we weren't able to, to be able to ensure that this can move on. I mean, it was, had a hope.
I guess the other thing that we can consider is like, when would we be, if we, we didn't renew this or extend this, like, when would we be ready to send out a new RFP? Are we gonna?
Well, that would, I think, have to be something that the board would have to, you know, discuss. I, I don't.
In my, in my opinion, we wouldn't want to do it until we have a town administrator in place, obviously.
We're just here to ask for the time extension to show that, uh, now that we're ready to go.
I mean, we can absolutely try to provide you with any, any questions that you have and anything up to that you've been looking for since now.
And we could submit a timeline that we have steadily been progressing. Just been unable to.
I guess I'm just, in my mind, I'm thinking that if we do a short extension, because we're not, I, I, I don't want to take on and to deal with another RFP and go through all this right now. If we did a short extension and they, you know, if they don't get things done, then we go out. I, I don't see us going forward with an R, another RFP anytime real soon. I mean, do you agree or is this something, I, I think this is something that's going to take some time.
If I may, to reach your time, it's something that was taken away from us.
Well, I, I don't know that, I agree to some extent, but I don't think you utilized your time that you did have most efficiently. So that's my concern.
I understand. And that's where I'm brought in. I want to make sure that we, we efficiently take care of the town, the due process time. If it's information, information you will have, I mean, you will get it.
Well, it's progress, progress, progress is what I want to see.
Understand.
I, I don't really want, I need to know everything. I just, it, it just needs to show some kind of, uh, action that's being taken. Somebody's going to be, you know, holding up a contract and holding up an opportunity for someone else isn't really fair unless we can show to make sure that you're doing everything you can to, to make sure that that's moving.
That's what we're asking because of the good cause. It's, you're asking for meaning, it's just.
I mean, I think in, we were able to do these in the past with an interim town administrator. We have a process in place for doing the request for informations, um, request slash request for proposals and everything. And that process, I think, is well documented and in place. So I don't know that we necess, like, I think that we could do it. It's been done with an acting town administrator in the past. And so, um, and these have been negotiated as such. So I don't necessarily think that that needs to hold, hold the board up for, you know, extended, you know, half year, year kind of timeline. Um, again, it would be kind of at the pleasure of the board for sure. Um, and at the same time, make sure that the process is filed, followed. And again, not precluding anyone from applying, reapplying, whatever. Um, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I was, I haven't been a part of any of these, so I wasn't quite sure what, what it entailed to do this. I guess it would have to take some, make some kind of a decision.
I, I would, no, I'm not making a motion, but I would propose that we deny, open it up for RFP, another RFP because I don't think this board's going to extend you eighteen months. And, and you're not going to finish it in eighteen months. So I think what you're doing is.
Well, we can finish, we can finish the bill and short of that. And we just figured that the, it's been eighteen months before it did, we'll really open back up.
Uh, the process will not take eighteen months. The, the length of time that was asked was just to mimic what basically the contract had already asked. The, the process will not take eighteen months.
The CCC won't take eighteen months?
It's pretty much through progress, yeah. Yes, ma'am. We're already past that and the, it's basically just a zoning and making sure we have proper permits. Uh, and they can, and the, the company's going to apply and make sure that they, uh, give the town all the proper, uh, drawings uh, that the town is required to have before the building, but it will not take eighteen months.
So you have a license from the CCC?
No, the host agreement from the CCC gives permission, is basically like a license. And then it, it's provisional, which allows us to, to finish. You have to have it built before you can get the license as, as part of the law. It's unfair.
I, I would, I would think that. I think what we have experienced is that another company thought that they had all, that they were all set. I think we've sat in meetings that they thought that they were all set. And what that only did was to give them, it, it allowed them to apply. And everything looked good, but you still go into the line and wait. It's not immediately.
Well, that's for anybody. And then, yeah, even if you went through the whole other process.
It, it, and it can be, it can be two years.
Uh, I think that the, I don't think that process is going to take two years. Uh, because the facility is already designed out specifically for Canvas. They're not going to be able to retro anything or look for any new addendums to the, to the building itself. I don't think it's going to take a two year process once.
I think even to get on.
The waiting line is two years.
Yeah, even to get on the agenda, I think has been.
You have to get on an agenda and it's, it's.
But to be.
Our, our license questions are, these, our license process, I bet, we've already been approved to be allowed to start the process, uh, and we're.
But in answer to your question, it will not take eighteen months. Uh, worst case scenario, it's a twelve to sixteen week for the actual build itself. Sixteen to twenty if they run into any build problems. And a little bit more than that with permitting, uh, inspections by, by boards and, excuse me, not by boards, but inspections, uh, proper inspections, electrical, HVAC, uh, all of that, you know, put into detail. Uh, it will not take eighteen months. No, absolutely not. These are prefabricated, um, already basically, I don't know if, uh, if you've seen the actual build out of it. They're everything down to the T from dehumidifiers to air conditioners, air purifiers. Uh, everything is done in this build out for this building. It's the reason why it took a little bit more of a process. Uh, New England's a little different than other areas of the country, so we wouldn't utilize, uh, possible corner venting. Not to get long winded, but just other, other things that we had to discuss in the.
Well, and all vent, uh, he is correct, one part. I, I can prove, um, I can give you portions of our license. It's a step by step process. You, you can't start the next step until the previous step is finished. Uh, and I can, and we're almost done. And I can submit that to you. I can print out from, uh, it's almost like an E permit through, like the planning board does.
Do we have a motion if we're not going to extend? See if it's already expired.
Can I make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we not extend and that we consider. I, I'm not even going to put in a motion that we, I, I think that that should be separate, that we consider opening RFP, RFI again. I think for right now, we just, I'll make a motion that we not extend.
Wait a second.
Any further discussion?
If I may, in the sense of, I have not worked in three years. I have put everything I can into this type of industry. My wife and my kids have sat by me, we have sat at a desk, talking on the phone with people over and over again, trying to get this done and trying to make sure we're all on the same page. This isn't just something as far as not getting information to somebody. I do understand that. I understand a due process. But the information can be given to you and can be given to you in a, in a manner to where it's going to be acceptable. It's something that will be feasible for the town. Once this is put in place and the agreement is going forward, the amount of people that we can hire and help out throughout the town, the percentage that goes back to the town, I think that's more, um, than levy to, to, to help us get a small extension.
Can you just let me curve as?
I mean, we, we discuss, and this won't preclude you from, um, reapplying for, you know, if the.
That's going to take, that's going to take me years. It's going to take a whole year of my life.
Well, in a short time, we can get this up, right now, now that.
But I, I think the ver, the board has heard, you know, all of the other great stories. And we're, and we're actually in the middle of a vote at this point, so I'll get a roll call.
The noise I.
Whitman I.
With regrets.
I know, with regrets, I.
Just to, in full support, uh, nickel's eye, I just think especially the eighteen months would just, just be too much anyway. So, um, like, you know, hopefully you'll, you'll apply it when it's reposted and, uh, go to that point. Now, you get a, if you get a lot of the work in place, it'd make it hopefully that much easier for you to process.
Yeah, I understand.
All right, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director, for coming out.
Okay.
We don't have any information to the next.
Does it, does it make the town report?
Yes, do we have any, do you have estimations for the dedication? There was nothing in our books, that's what I'm saying.
No, so I guess we would discuss it. I actually was going to make a recommendation.
Okay.
To, if the, done in memory of Cleland Blair Senior, who has been on several boards and committees. He served with me on the finance committee. Um, I know that he donated a lot to the CIRP team when I was on that. He's made donations and, and helped families and stuff in town. And, uh, obviously has been a big part of the community for several years. He passed away in December of twenty twenty. And I just feel it is worthy of him being recognized at, um, the board, that's just my. From my knowledge, nobody is submitting any other recommendations.
Has it been advertised? I, has it been advertised?
It was sent to all departments and stuff, yeah.
Oh, wow, okay. But we were looking for, um, recommendations, yes.
So we have no, nothing for the memorial or anything for the dedication from anybody? Yes, Joe.
Mr. Chairman, I did make the recommendations to the clerical staff that supports the board for a memorial referencing, um, Steve Kettle. He was a longtime War employee.
Yes, Steve Kettle.
Passed last year. I did forward it on. I, I don't know why the board doesn't have it, but it's been made available.
Director, I think that there's two, there's in, in memoriam and then there's a dedication of.
Yeah, I wasn't, I, yeah, just a reference in memorial, not.
I, I, I think that that did tell us about the in memoriam, yes.
Okay, so you got that. Okay, good.
So it's the dedication of the whole.
The dedication, yeah. No, I didn't make a dedicate, but it's the way it was described. I'm sorry if I confused.
That's okay.
You want a motion to prove your dedication or not?
Well, the, 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 the.
I'd make a motion to dedicate this to, what year are we talking?
Twenty twenty one.
Twenty twenty one annual report.
Yes.
F Y twenty twenty.
Yeah, F Y twenty twenty one.
Yep. Town report to Cleland Blair Senior for all that he's done for the town.
That's second.
You roll call.
Clark I.
Whitman I.
Whitman I.
And nickel's eye. So now on the, so like, we did not see that, so for Stephen, you know, how, how are we gonna?
I do remember that talking about it, saying that you had.
So, and so will we get a motion to?
I don't think it means to me.
I don't think you need a motion for memorial.
You don't need a vote? I don't know. It's just, I always say, because that's how you put it on the agenda, so.
Oh, okay.
If you had any questions about it, I want to make sure it's yours.
No, thank you, because I, I wasn't, I wasn't aware of that one. I don't know if I missed it or something, but.
I think it might have been when I was chatting with them.
Okay, so those are the two right now that we have.
That's, that, Steve would be in, in in memorial.
Memorial and the other is the dedication.
Yep, and the dedication.
But we have other, nobody else has submitted any kind of. Um, I know there was talk about the covers. Are we supposed to decide on the cover?
Well, they were supposed to get some pictures out. Somebody was, was out to the public to take pictures. Well, they were supposed to get some pictures out. Somebody was out to the public to take pictures.
I remember if I may, I do remember Beth mentioning that there was a request to do the Rettlin vaccine team.
Right, yeah.
I didn't know if that was in memorial, not in memorial, sorry, dedication.
No, that 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 was that was the cover.
Oh, okay, okay.
Something like that, okay. All right, so I guess we don't have to do anything more on that. Right? All right. Assuming that Mike is still on.
He is communication.
Next is a discussion of possible action for dispatch director contract. Mike, are you on?
He's sleeping, but he's on. Mike, you're.
All right, so, um, I mean, everybody's had a copy of the contract. The only difference is the cost of living. Okay, so correct. I'm just going to.
Can you hand me that off?
Okay.
Sounds like somebody's trying to dial or something.
Mike, I think it's star six or star six nine. I can't remember. If you're on your phone.
That's Morse code. He said, I'll be right with you.
I'm on another call.
It's very late and long and I'm tired, so hopefully we can get. Through this.
So the only there were no changes other than.
Cost of living. And that was, what was it, two percent, right? Carol, is that what?
Two percent.
Yeah, and that so that falls under compensation salaries and that shows the salaries and that we're for two percent.
Peter, can you hear me?
Ah, there you are.
Oh, I figured it out. Sorry about that.
It's okay. Um, so I know you you reviewed the contract already with the town administrator and the only change that we've noted is the two percent cost of living. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, correct.
Okay. So I don't know that we have to really match discussion unless anybody has any questions or concerns or anything.
We have an executive session if you want to discuss it. I I guess we could offer that.
I mean, I mean, if if you prefer, we can go into executive session if you. Are comfortable, then.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, and that, yeah, we could go into an executive session.
Okay.
Okay, so then I am going to, um, take us in the executive session.
To adjourn from executive?
To adjourn from.
From. So good night.
Good night.
Also, is saying that you won't be returning to open session.
Right, oh, I think that's what I meant to adjourn. Yeah, so we won't be returning to open session. Thank you.